Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Hey.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Dolphin.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Bastin.
Here.
And President.
Superintendent's report?
Change it up, just doing the superintendent's report right away because we're going to kind of mix our recognitions along inside of the superintendent's report, which we traditionally do at the beginning. So I will just share some of the highlights from this past month. Recently, the DPI, Department of Public Instruction, recognized Mineral Point Schools as, for a school health award. We received a bronze recognition, which means we promote healthy nutritional choices. We get students active. We have policies in place around student wellness. We have a committee that addresses wellness efforts and actively involve parents in our wellness policy. The last two, the committee to address wellness and actively involving parents are where we can upgrade to a silver or gold. So we need to show evidence of doing more around there. But again, to be recognized as bronze, this is the third straight year. Prior to that, we were never recognized. So we're doing some things well, but I know that's one of Julie Pampos' goals, to lead that effort to become more recognizable. We have some new staff on board. For those that have not met our new staff, we have Brooke McGraw in the upper left. She's our first grade teacher and instructional coach. In the upper right is Brittany Roscovius. She's our English Language Arts teacher at the high school level. Down the bottom left is Katie Hughes, our new kindergarten teacher. And Erin Leonard is in the bottom right. She's our math intervention and option school support person. And in the middle is our latest hire, Bridget Tippett. She works as an instructional assistant for us. We'd like to recognize, and Mitch is here, he was just inducted into the Wisconsin Basketball Coaches Hall of Fame. So he will have a ceremony coming up where he'll officially be recognized and inducted. But it's quite the honor for Mineral Point and his career and legacy over two schools and beyond. So congratulations, Mitch, on that achievement. We had a opening staff and family picnic. Family and friends were able to come and join us at Soldier Memorial Park. We had 60 attendees roughly, and that included some retirees. Our substitute teachers were invited, as well as our regular staff. So it was a nice way to kick off the school year and was well attended on a beautiful summer day. Our professional development went off very well. Apologize for the fuzzy picture.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. Can you reload that or something?
I cannot. But Minji Routman was here, working with literacy in the elementary building. And EduClimber warehouse, there's a data warehouse tool that we use, was here in the afternoon with the elementary. Then the middle school and high school started with the EduClimber, again, that data warehouse tool. And then in the afternoon, they received information around suicide prevention. So those were our professional development days here on staff. One of our staff members and her husband, Livia and Justin Doyle, are finalists right now for the Wisconsin Farm Bureau Excellence in Egg Award. So that more information will be coming in the fall. We wish them well. Just to be a finalist is pretty exciting, but if they could actually win that award, it would be quite the achievement for the Doyle family and for our community. We held back-to-school night. We had parents and students meeting their teachers and dropping off school materials and taking pictures and photos. And it was just an energetic and exciting time to see staff and families and students come back together again. Another award that our community is receiving is the Land Trust of the Year Award. Sarah Pierce is one that works closely with that group. And she helps us develop curriculum for our outdoor classrooms in the Oak Savannah. And Chuck Tenison is one that's instrumental in protecting those resources around the greater Mineral Point area. And both of them will be receiving an award for the Land Trust of the Year. And that will be coming up at the Monona Terrace this fall. Directly and indirectly related to our school district is the Wisconsin Cross Country Coaches. More specifically, Joe Hanson and Denny McGraw have been at our board meetings many times. As our staff, or our students, have been recognized for competing at the state tournament with the Dodge Point cross-country teams and track teams. Joe and Denny will be going into the Cross Country Coaches Hall of Fame. So if you see either one of them, certainly wish them congratulations for Mineral Point as well. The Iowa County Fair took place. There was enormous students that attended and had a chance to see some of the judging that was taking place. And many of them did really well, both in the judging and in the auction. And it's just a great time for our community to come around a great event at the Iowa County Fair. We had two days of professional development with our certified staff. Maria Nielsen from Solution Tree came in and ran a session or workshop, a two-day workshop, on responding to intervention as part of our second tier of professional development. Maria received excellent marks and rankings from the staff, and they raved about asking if she could even return again next year. She led the response to intervention workshop, but worked closely with all of our staff and created a 15-day challenge to integrate whatever you call boulders, which are those essential outcomes that kids have to know over the next 15 days and build some assessments around those. And then use that to reproduce itself for another 15-day challenge going forward and forward and forward. So she really re-energized and reinvigorated our staff with a great start to the school year to do the great work that we're doing and continue on. Officer Ottawa is our newest DARE member. He went to a week's worth of training. DARE is the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program. He and I talked almost 45 minutes at length about the rigor of this program and his ideas for implementing new strategies in the elementary, looking at moving it from a paper version to an online version. And it was great to see him excited and energized about a program and thought it was so worthwhile. And the networking that he was able to do with other officers throughout the country was a pretty powerful piece for Mineral Point. The Herb Cole nomination period is now open. If you remember, last year, Matt Nevers was the recipient as the State Teacher of the Year for the Cole Fellowship Award. And this is the opportunity for us, as parents or teachers, as peers, can nominate other staff for this recognition. So I encourage board members, staff members, parents to nominate a teacher and recognize them for their accomplishments in Mineral Point. We have many that are worthy. I am now a part of the WASDA Policy Committee. And the Policy Committee is something that works closely with the UW Extension Madison Educ-, I'm sorry, the Education and Policy Research Development Group, which basically does education research. And that does a crosswalk with the Association of School District Administrators to look at where should we put policy around best practice in education research. So that's a new committee that I've been working on. But I'll be meeting twice over the school year with other superintendents around the state to look at that education research and help the Association of District Administrators develop the policy to implement to meet the new needs of an emerging workforce, students, and so forth. Received a Lands End donation, and Noreen Downey and Kara Sennett were here and gave us a gift of $250 from the Lands End Outfitters. They did a fundraising effort, and I think they gifted to multiple schools, $250 each. And it was a really nice opportunity for us to receive that gift and put it to use for students.
Brooke.
Yeah.
Kara Sennett.
Did I say that? Pardon? Kara?
Kara.
Kara, thank you. Sorry, my mistake. First day of school went well. All the students came back. The buses ran well. Everybody got on and off. We went to classes with no hiccups, and food service went without any problems. We were a little bit short-staffed until we figured out our new enrollment challenges. But we made it work for that first week, and we continue to work with an emerging population. Our alternative school is currently working out of the public library until we get a final release to be able to go back into the new location. We are working diligently to get that up and running as soon as possible, but we are not permitted in there until we get the final permitting that says we can have occupancy. Our ACT scores were just released and no longer embargoed. And in each one of those categories, on the top, you'll have the juniors when they were last year, 2016, and then the junior class of 2017. So you can look at comparison from last year to this year. But in each one of those categories, we were, again, exceeding the state average. And again, it just seemed to be on a good pathway or trajectory to continue to work on increasing our overall scores. And we don't know how that compares to the rest of the state, other than the state average. But we don't have the data released yet for area schools in the southwestern part of the state. So it's hard to say overall how we're doing, other than comparing to ourselves. And at this point, things continue to look favorably as we exceed the state average. This morning, and going again into tomorrow, we started our FAST training, which, remember, that's Families and Schools Together. It was a good group of people. We have two social workers, a social worker, the school nurse, a trainer, and Paula Schutte is a parent representative from our community, all coming together. And the training today really was exciting for me to see firsthand. It's going to be a powerful tool that's going to strengthen our families and it's going to empower our parents. And you'll see more about that as we start to unfold and enroll the actual eight-week mini-session, two hours together with families, that will really start to build some enroats with a community of parents. This morning also, the Hawkins Endowment Fund was released in kind of a more formal manner. If you know, we have the Community Endowment Fund, and this will be a subset of that endowment fund that will work specifically to protect the Oak Savannah and Mr. Hawkins' legacy with that program. So you can start to gift to that endowment fund and help to ensure that the Oak Savannah, the big asset of our outdoor classroom at both the elementary as well as the high school, is something that's protected well into the future. And then a quick look backwards and a quick look forward. I won't go through all of these, but some of the big key upcoming meetings for myself over the next month, before we meet again as a board, is I was selected to work with UW-Plattville on what's called a NOICE project. It's a grant-driven project. And what it does is creates alternative pathways to licensure for physics teachers specifically, as there's a big shortage, not only just in southwest Wisconsin, but across the state. So I'll be networking with superintendents and leaders in the area to learn, how can we get more physics teachers into the teacher pool? And what are some of the alternative ways to look at getting additional certifications? CISA III, the PAC meeting is a professional advisory committee, and we look at school improvement measures. That meets Wednesday, so the NOICE grant is tomorrow. CISA III is Wednesday. Thursday, our community meets around the stadium project and next steps. We just recently added fencing above the wall to add a safety component, so that if there was anybody that wasn't aware that there was a wall there, they don't fall off. And the next step is, again, working on lighting and additional fencing to secure the facility. On Friday, I'm at the Board of Control for the WIAA, and we'll be discussing the area meetings and the topics that are associated with that. More specifically, the rural-urban model for basketball divisions is something that we're pondering across the state. And that initiated in this part of the state is a topic of concern. Two conferences coming up, the Association of School District Administrators, that's WASDA, so that's district administrators. And WASBO is school business officials, so very different slants. And the business officials is one that is new for me this year, and just putting more time into understanding the state funding formula and what other schools are doing around budgeting and best practices there. Lastly, the Educational Endowment Fund also has a meeting coming up this month, so we'll be taking some steps there. And it is a fun time at the end of the month, when we look at homecoming games and parades and the Gridiron Golf outing that are all in conjunction with that big weekend. So a busy week of September, but it's exciting and it's right where I want to be. That ends the superintendent's report. Any questions or anything I can clarify?
I like you giving your report as Mickey and me.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback. We'll fold in school recognitions again when we get those coming in for clubs, activities, sports, and so forth.
Just to know, Brooke, I had, I could wait till Citizen Communication, but I had a question about a THR article on the ACT scores.
Okay.
And a lot of Iowa schools were in there. And it's just important to note, for anybody that read that, that Iowa, all Wisconsin students give years to take the test in Iowa, about 50%. So if you're score shopping or comparing, it's not really apples to apples.
Thank you. I think there's less than a dozen states that require all students to take the ACT, so there is some comparable data that helps us for your right. You've got to be careful not to cherry pick the data that you're compared to.
What's the alternative school is up and running and ready to go? Can we tour it?
Absolutely. Yep.
Do you want to make a open house tour? Pardon me? Probably not an open house tour. Okay.
When is the target date to move into the alternative school?
Do you have the latest update on that?
I was there when they were doing the inspection. I don't know if it passed or not. They just did their first inspection, which I don't think anything passes first inspection. That was on Friday. And then I'm sure they're going to have, I saw some ADA stuff, so it'll be a little bit, I would imagine. I would say probably best would be the first part of October.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes for the motion to approve. There were meeting, Jeff.
I can send them.
Approval of. Motion by Jeff, second by Julie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Communications, board communications received. Citizen communications? Told anybody to sign out?
Nobody signed out.
Okay. Business services? Credit card and bills payable. Should we do it together? We'll separate the choir risers. Motion by Jeff, second by Larry. Any discussion? Rock on.
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Upstain.
Dolphin.
Yes.
Gunlock.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Bastin. And Stetis.
Yes.
SS 502.
Number three, approval of choir risers.
Yeah, the coral department, specifically Department of One, Ashley McHugh, has requested to purchase coral risers. She has done her homework, shared with me all four competitive bids that she looked at and the choices among each one of those companies that they offer. And we selected Wagnier Corporation with a cost of $8,953. That's for a set of six flexible coral risers. Shipping and handling tax was removed, as we are a tax-exempt organization. The old risers, I believe, are from the past high school, if I'm not mistaken. There are 18 others. 18.
Can you be more specific? All right. We recommend approval. So do we have a motion to approve?
I'll wait.
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Andy. Any discussion? Are these bigger? Ashley?
Ever so slightly, but they have railing built in, and they stack on themselves. So we don't have to even worry about kids jumping off of them, falling off of them, or getting tackled by one as they're falling off the wall. And they also have four swiveling wheels, so I can move them, I can open them myself. These I can't. I cannot do that myself. So.
All right. Any other discussion?
Just want to miss one on budget.
Yes, she did the city debt in the budget last spring.
Roll call.
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Dolphin.
Yes.
Gunlock.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Bastin.
Yes.
Stetis. There is an item number four added. It's not on the paper copy, but it's on the electronic copy. It was approval of paper. And just a quick description of that, a bulk order of paper, which includes 240 cases of white and 16 cases of assorted color. It totals an amount of more than $5,000, $5,976 to be exact, before the board for approval. This is a standard purchase. The cases are similar to what has been done in the past. The recent past and the old past, we used a lot more paper than we do. Just quite simply, they're coming here. Paper use, because we're going more virtual and paperless, using one-on-one. So we recommend approval. This should be the year.
The year?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Larry, second. By Kelly. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Dolphin.
Yes.
Gunlock.
Employee Services.
Approval of instructional assistant. Melissa Crest to an instructional assistant position, starting with this school year. Melissa's salary is based on Step Zero, the instructional lane, coming in at her entry level. Will be support staff, working specifically with a one-on-one student that just arrived in our district.
Motion. Motion by Jeff, second by Julie.
So just to clarify, we've added, we added one last meeting. This will be an additional. Correct. And it's a separate family that has moved in, per their IEP. We either need to give them instructional services in the classroom, or we need to look at a contract with New Frontier School, which would be cost of the tuition to the school, as well as transportation to and from.
This is a transfer service?
This is a transfer of service group.
There was two members.
There's two members in the family, one that requires one-on-one services, one that does not.
If the child's IEP changes, can we revisit this higher?
Absolutely.
So that'll be clear to them that...
Do we have enough room for these assistants? Is this at an elementary?
This is middle school. Oh, this is a middle school. And they'll be working inside of the classroom alongside of the teacher in these scenarios. In this particular scenario. So they don't need a separate room to pull out to, is my point.
Step Zero.
Yes. $30.50 is our entry level, is salary position.
Full-time?
That is a full-time school year contract, so a 10-month contract.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Dolphin.
Yes.
Gunlock.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Bastin.
Yes.
And Stetis.
Yes.
SS 70. There is an item number four added. It's not on the paper copy, but it's on the electronic copy. It was approval of paper. And just a quick description of that, a bulk order of paper, which includes 240 cases of white and 16 cases of assorted color. It totals an amount of more than $5,000, $5,976 to be exact, before the board for approval.
Motion by Julie, second. Second by Jeff. Correct. Andy, sorry. This was approved by the board last month.
Correct.
The position was.
The position.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call.
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Dolphin.
Yes.
Gunlock.
Yes.
I have items for action. Two places on the agenda. One, because we have a guest, and then we can go into information discussion and come back to other action items that are later in the agenda that don't require our guest to stay as long. So if you're okay with the agenda, we'll proceed.
Sure.
Sounds good. I'd like to re-welcome Kristy from FHM.
FEH, actually. Looks like it's an autocorrect title.
No, I think you're right.
Agenda.
Just as I was saying, that doesn't sound right.
Yeah, it's FEH.
Got it correct. We'll get it corrected in a few minutes as well. So welcome back.
Hi, everybody.
Hello. We have in the board packet, a proposal from FEH that would work with our community to engage them in a facility planning process. And Kristy's here to go over the highlights of the proposal and answer any questions that you may have as a board.
Yeah. Luke, do you want to say anything about what precipitated this request for proposal? Or I can just jump right in.
Yeah.
I just want to make any comments.
No, go ahead. We jumped in, and then I'll go back.
Okay. Well, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read the proposal. Would you like me to go kind of item by item through the different menu? Items, I think that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Okay. So the first thing is a facility condition assessment. And we weren't sure if there was an assessment, but essentially, we go through each building, we evaluate the needs, and then we put together a little report. And I have a facilities condition assessment from Cuba City that we had put together. But what you get out of it is essentially a fancy chart. I put it in, you know, your school color, so it would match. But it goes through, I can pass this around if you'd like, but it goes through the item, the issue, and then puts a cost to it. And then at the back, our images associated with it. So it's just a comprehensive study of your buildings, the needs, and then the costs associated with fixing the various items. We could also put together a priority listing of items, or put them in priority in the list, if you want. So you took the catalog for the district to know what's on their list of things that need to get improved or things that need to get addressed in the building, from a facilities maintenance standpoint. So that is the first item. And you have the cost range there, because we weren't sure, if you have a start, we'd be happy to use what you have as a start and then put together an itemized table with the costs. You could do as little or as involved a process as you'd like for that piece. The next item, space needs evaluation, is also in this fancy book, and I'd be happy to pass it around. But essentially, we go through, we catalog your existing spaces. So we make a catalog of the existing spaces. We have the existing size. We look at national standard square footages, and then we propose a size. Like if you have existing classrooms that might be 750 square feet, depending on the type of class, typically like 900 square feet or 1,200 for certain types of classes. So we would itemize what you have. We could highlight classrooms that are missing, or certain elements that might be missing in your facility. So it would be essentially another fancy table that we put in this nice book form for you that would highlight deficiencies of space in your buildings. And then we also have a public input process. So you'll see here, that's eight core committee meetings and five public advisory task force meetings. Essentially, you put together a core committee of, typically, it doesn't have to be in this instance, but you would put together a core committee of people who would be the decision makers, so to speak. That would be the group that would come up with the final recommendation that would then come to the board. So it might include a board member or two. It would include school staff, potentially, in district administration. So these people would work on, well, here, I'm going to, I'm going to go to my other book. We also, yes, happy to. I'm sorry I didn't mark the pages. But I wanted to note that we also did a similar process for the Perry DeShane School District, where we worked with them on a condition assessment, space needs evaluation, and then facilitated a public input process. So we had a core committee group. We worked on goals for the school district that are kind of high-level goals on where you'd like the district to be in terms of facilities. And then you take that information and bring it to a public advisory task force meeting that you invite maybe 100 or so different people, depending on how many people you'd like to be involved in this process. You talk about facilities, and I would, I'd like to simply read the advisory task force role to help clarify this. This was the advisory task force role at Perry DeShane. And the role of the advisory task force is to share their opinions and ideas, participate in development and analysis of solution options, to make recommendations to the core planning committee and decision-making school district board of directors. This will help to inform these decision-makers on what the community is interested in and will support for the future of the public school district. So the public meetings are to feel out members of the public in terms of what they would be on board with in terms of the direction for the school district, with your buildings and facilities.
So the public gets involved first, and then there's the task force?
The task force is the public.
Okay, the task force is the public.
Yes, sorry. The core committee would be the school, kind of core group. And then, so the core group would start development of said goals. And then you would involve the public to give input on said goals and said direction. And there's usually some voting involved about different directions.
Yeah, the task force, though.
Yes, the task force kind of starts with the public meetings and gives input on direction. And then it goes to the core committee for kind of vetting, and then would come to the school board for action.
And how is the community chosen?
The core committee? That would be at the school board's discretion. So you would create a committee typically made up of a school board member or two, and I would say district staff and school staff. So you would, potentially. And then you would create a public advisory task force. And I would say the core committee would come up with a list of members of the public who would be invited to that, but then it's also open to the public.
My understanding is that it was open to the public. That was my bias.
The public advisory task force, yes.
But you also said people who are invited... But you also said people who are invited.
Yeah, it's open to the public. But typically, we send out a letter and we invite people. We kind of get the word out and invite people, so if there...
And I thought that was much broader than what... It just seemed like it's more focused.
No, it's open to the public. It totally is. Typically, we start with a list of kind of go-getters in the community that we typically like to invite. And then we ask them to invite their friends and other people they think would be useful. And then put it in paper, invite the public, and make it open. But you gotta start somewhere. And typically, you start with invitations to certain people and to the public.
So do you limit the number? I mean, I think I kind of agree with Kelly that it's like... All right, do we limit to fifty or can we have a hundred?
Hundred, hundred sounds great.
If three hundred are interested, three hundred.
I think explain the process of what it looks like with a hundred because again, we've got concept drawings and sticky notes and so forth. So it's kind of almost like a parade of options that you can walk through and may comment on. So I think we understand the context of how do you get a hundred people organized and get feedback on what's worked in other districts might help the board understand.
I know you have to start somewhere. But this also sounds like you start with a certain group and then you make, you think, I'm sorry. You think it's gonna spider out, but I want it to spider out to everyone.
The board decides how they want to spider it.
So I think, I think typically, in the past, we've started with a group of people. But essentially, it's to get the word out, you send letters to people. And then you can make phone calls and you can publish it in the school newsletters. And you can put it on the website and you can publish it wherever you like. To essentially get the word out to everybody, we have to start somewhere. So typically, we start with the group of people that would typically get the word out. And then we use that as the spring, the spring off.
We published that last meeting, didn't we? We had on television.
Yes.
Yes, we're talking about the same thing, yeah.
We got twenty-one people.
I think there was roughly mid twenties that came through that day.
Hopefully, and since this is a limited number of meetings, so it would be five meetings. And we would try to have the meeting dates upfront so people would be aware of their time commitment when they would decide to come to the meetings. They don't have to come to all the meetings. But if we had all five meetings scheduled, which we typically like to do, and they last no more, typically, no more than an hour and a half, we've got a very set time commitment and date schedule. And then if people are aware of the limited nature of such a thing, oftentimes, we'll get more people in attendance.
And I think, Lady, that at that meeting, those, they weren't decision-makers. I mean, they were, they were there to be informed, but they ultimately weren't on the committee to be a decision-maker. So that's, you know, we have, we have to do a good job of making this inclusive for everyone, you know, to be a decision-maker.
I agree.
We typically do voting by, or raise hands or we do dots on different concepts. So it's, it's not, oh, you voted this way. It's kind of a consensus, a group consensus process.
We can't get any people coming to meetings.
I'm here.
A board meeting, I mean, if it just won't show up.
You gotta make it exciting and have cookies.
Well, that's because we're doing our job. When we don't do our job, what else?
They figure you all have it under control, right?
I think it's because it's videotaped.
Oh, okay.
They can all watch it on videotape.
So it is, it is a public input process and it's up to, well, us to help you get the word out and invite as many people as possible. And we can make phone calls. We would set you up with kind of a letter template and a lot of the stuff that you'd need to get started. The onsite design workshop slash charrette, I don't know if, well, I don't know if Kevin talked about this at all, but it's essentially, I'll show you the pictures because the pictures are a lot more fun. I don't... So, so essentially, based on the public input process, you get an idea of what the public might be interested in in terms of facility scenario. And then you come up with a whole bunch of different drawings of different options. And we open those up, we open up the two days to the public that typically have it at one of your buildings in the commons or in an open space. And we come up with a whole bunch of different scenarios. And then we allow the public to fill out pro and con sheets based on the different scenarios. We facilitate meetings typically midday around the noon hour and at the end of the day. We would typically request that the advisory task force would come to the meetings at the end of the design workshop because then there's voting and there's fun stuff that springboards off of what's already been kind of created as part of the advisory, the public advisory task force. We have these different schemes, come up with a whole bunch of different options, pros and cons sheets. And then each of these, well, not each of the options, but on the second day, the option that, that may get most of the buy-in, that would get the votes, that the public would have consensus on moving forward. Typically, we put together budget summaries for each of the options. So you have some general, yeah, you can see, general budgets. And then we would take it back to the office after the two days, refine it a little bit, refine the concepts, refine the budgets, and then it would ultimately go to the board. Well, it would go to the core committee and then it would go to the board for review. The workshop is really fun. That's what I like. You have options for sketching and the public is invited to attend anytime throughout that charrette. Come up with different schemes for how something might lay out. We like it so students can come and participate in the design workshop and they get their comments. Usually, they involve food or skywalks or like pools. It doesn't matter what we're saying we're working on, it always involves one of those things. So we facilitate a design workshop that incorporates the public input from the advisory task force. We use that as the springboard for a two-day design charrette. And then out of that, you get your schemes and your budgets. And then we take those schemes and those budgets and we put them into a community survey that is an electronic and paper survey to get actual public input on certain concepts, to get buy-in and see what people's thoughts are. Would they support something like this or like that? So I believe that is a quick and dirty overview. That's very quick. I apologize for the quickness.
It's okay, it allows us to go deeper other parts than mine and more about it.
Well, yeah, if you have questions, I'd be happy to have this book around if you have any...
Because the clean backstory was obviously that we still have the facility needs that the board knows what we're working through and trying to address. And we don't have a long-range plan at this point. We're kind of working through the projects as we go year by year with budget by budget with no long-term plan. We were looking at a different model. And this model is different than a managed service in that it's a community-based outcome that is driven into a design-build concept, which is very different than what we've considered in the past. In Dr. Ades' first-year superintendent at River Ridge, they were at it and passed for multiple years on how to proceed with their facilities. And in working with him, they have recently gotten past being unstuck and moved forward with a concept that you're working with closely.
Yeah, I have pictures if you want to see it. But yeah, it's under construction, their middle school wing.
So they have, they passed a referendum in River Ridge.
Correct.
Nine, nine and a half, no.
Nine point five, yes.
And Cuba City, who you mentioned, they had a referendum too. And six point four.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I think they had two parts, one passed, one didn't. It seems like, I mean, that this, if we go forward with this, my concern is that it's a, that it's a slippery slope leading to referendum. And, and that we would be, we would have a difficult time putting brakes on it once we give the green light to this multi-step process.
But the community is involved in the process.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I was gonna say that would be the only place where it is a slope that would move toward a solution. But the solution, the slippery slope, would be driven by the community. It would be what the community wants to see going forward with the referendum. And the community would ultimately need to pass the referendum rather than the board telling the community what it is that they should pass. So I think that's, that's the fundamental difference that I'm seeing between the two models.
And if you have a survey and the survey comes back with really poor results, like the community isn't necessarily interested in supporting the dollar value required for some of your projects, then you know. And then we can look at alternative funding measures. It doesn't, it doesn't equal a referendum. It gives you a feel for what the community would be willing to do, but it doesn't mean that you have to do that. If there's alternative funding sources or the school wants to look elsewhere than referendum, that's also an option. I don't necessarily know what that would be. But if the community buy-in isn't there, then there's no reason that you have to pursue that.
Have you ever started this process where it doesn't lead to referendum?
Me personally, no. Typically, the idea is how do we make these projects happen? And typically, the referendum is the answer. But I have had smaller projects kind of springboard off of this that if a referendum doesn't pass or if they decide not to pursue it, you've, you've got your condition assessment and you've got your idea of what the different costs of things are. Sometimes you just start a list and you say, okay, this is the most urgent need. We have roof leaks here or whatnot. We want to fix that first. And instead of doing referendum, you prioritize your facilities list and you work through it and then here.
I'm not pro or anti-referendum. But you're making a judgment that the community hasn't decided on, Lisa. That's what I'm, I mean, you're putting the referendum out front before we've ever gone through a process.
No, I'm concerned that the opposite would happen. That we'd be putting, we'd be putting a referendum, that that would be something that we'd be heading toward. You know, and this all seems very reasonable, but I just, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but...
Most of your surveys are sent out around here. You get about ten percent back. That's about all.
Trying to make it as accessible as possible. And I think it's important that as you do all the, let's say, as part of the assessment, space needs, public input, and the design workshop, we don't talk referendum. We're just trying to get the ideas out there. Depending on the ideas and the recommendations that come to the school board, we then tailor the community survey. And it doesn't have to say referendum. It, we can choose other words. We don't have to point people in that direction if that, if that board doesn't want us to do that. Generally, that's the direction. If you're looking at kind of big scope, big-ticket items, that's generally what happens. But we don't have to specifically look referendum. We don't, we try not to do that at the start. Try to be as open-minded and big-thinking as possible, regardless of how you're going to pay for it. And then we kind of work our way towards that.
So what would be wrong with doing a facility condition assessment? Letting the board look at, look at the costs associated with that and the reasoning behind it. And then the board put together an advisory committee like we've had. We do it every other month for different reasons, almost, maybe not quite every other month. With the safety committee, for example. And then let that committee come back and advise the board. And then the board, what we're elected to do, make the decision on what our schools need.
We ultimately are gonna make the decision anyway, Lady.
Yeah, but it's hard to make it when you have fifty people that have, that have children in the district and thinking that, or thinking that, oh, I want a nineteen million dollar makeover in my school. My kids are going to benefit from it?
We got a new first grade teacher because parents wanted it. We're getting a new safety entrance because parents have wanted. We have to trust our voters. They voted for us. It has to be a reciprocated trust. We have to trust in the community to guide us. And we, and by trusting them, we need to listen to them. So when we, they go through this process, we understand what they want more. Otherwise, we're just guessing sometimes or we're only listening to a small few. This, this could encompass a greater diversity group of people making decisions about a big picture in the future. This isn't a fix-it-as-we-go thing. This is a big picture.
It sounds like an expensive big picture.
But you don't think the people that'll be most involved are going to be the parents of the students who want to see the big improvements, major changes?
And we all want to see improvements.
I don't know, Lisa, I mean, you know, I've heard you say pool and that's, you know, I've heard you say pool a couple times and like, cool.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, you said, I've heard you mention like, well, there gets, pool mentioned again. It's like, you know, we would discount something like that. You know, like, we couldn't wear a pool.
Are you, what are you saying about, I mean, are you saying you don't want a pool?
I'm saying...
Are you saying that you think the public doesn't want a pool?
Well, what if they do? Then we have to make the decision that that may not be the thing that we need.
If I may, oh, I'm sorry.
My concern is that we got to a point in the last process where we decided that we had not done enough work before we dove in. And I think we're right back there again. I don't think we have had a facilities, a real facilities discussion since we sent the last vendor home. And I think we have to decide where...
And the board.
Right. Where, if we're even, if there's even support for anything. If there's not long-term vision or long-term support, you know, I guess, based on how the last process went, it seems like we're throwing good money, bad money after good.
Because some of this seems like what we had with the, we had Nexus Commander. We, they did a facilities plan, they, this document.
Which we can't use legally.
They put a lot of, totally, we can use it. They put a lot of time and effort into it. We had a community survey, we had an open house, we had tours of the schools. And, and it was helpful in that it identified urgent matters that we are currently addressing. But yes, Andy's right, we need to go through the items that have already been identified and prioritize them.
And not opposed to getting public perception at that point.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And involving this process.
Or having some sort of task force. And FEH, I mean, you guys have worked with us, the dust collector. And I think you'll be there when a roof gets looked at and that hasn't already happened.
The security.
It's, it's nice to have the involvement of your firm. But I'm not sure that I'm prepared to engage in that comprehensive partner at this point. I mean, that's just where I'm coming from.
If it would be helpful, there's nothing that says that you have to approve this proposal in its entirety. If it's helpful, no pressure. We could take the facility assessment that you have, help prioritize it, put it in a list, put it in a comprehensive condition assessment and do a space needs evaluation that we would present to the board. We could do hypothetically the first two menu items and give it to you guys so you can decide what you want to do.
Well, can we use their material?
There might be a conflict.
I don't think we can use it legally.
The original agreement say that if we use Nexus recommendations, that we proceed with what they consider phase two work, that we use no other company other than Nexus. So that's if we're using their recommendations. If we're driving our own recommendations, for instance, the, the security entrance is not their concept. It's a new and different concept that was created by...
So we can't assess theirs to determine what we need?
For a period of three years, which we're halfway through, the way I read this, this language.
So we can't use their, we can't use it, we haven't paid for it anyway.
We, we could potentially take their information and roll it into something new and slightly different.
Legally?
I don't know, I'm asking.
I think we know, I mean, we sort of know what's in. I mean, and on some level, we, we knew, we knew about the boilers. We, you know, we know the roof fence leak. So these aren't secrets, they're our buildings.
And the other piece is that even if the district, let's say, go today, which we're not prepared to, there's a year and a half left in that agreement. And a boiler probably wouldn't be replaced in a timeframe within the next year and a half when going through a full comprehensive study of engineering and the ordering and the actual installation. You'd probably be no need to order a boiler today to put it in the summer. But I'm not sure the exact timing, but there's a little bit more that goes into that. So we're going to be well beyond the period of disagreement before we do anything of any substance. So we're going to be well beyond the period of disagreement before we do anything of any substance.
And, I'm sorry. You're suggesting that you help facilitate us coming up with the priorities. But what if we attempt on our own to do that and see how that goes? And see if we need help facilitating it first? What do you think on that?
I think we've been in a good rut for how many years have we, I mean, I think, do you think we can actually facilitate it? I mean, no one's been able to facilitate it the last three years.
We have not, we haven't, we haven't had a meeting where the subject matter is prioritize the items that need to be addressed in the facilities. We've not had that as an agenda.
Do you know if the report, did it look at the code and ADA? It looked at kind of all those components or was it deferred maintenance? Or what did the report have, may I ask?
I believe it didn't have all of those.
Oh, did, okay, okay. I wanted to make sure that all that stuff was covered because our stats tend to be helpful when you talk ADA. There's nothing that says that you can't come up with a list and, and that we could just help you confirm it. That's totally doable. If you would need our assistance putting together a list, we can, we can scale it back and just do a little tiny piece of that as needed.
At this time, you're still already on the dust collector team.
Yep.
That's within the run-on final together. They approved that last time.
Yes.
It's all new.
And it's not an immediate thing. It's a, you have this information. You can use it whenever. And if you want to try to start and put together your own assessment, I'd say go for it. Sure. I think you just volunteered yourself.
Me as the board? I think all of us, I think, have a desire to do this. We had, we had a meeting, a subcommittee meeting, maybe in April. And it was through that that we prioritized the things that had to get done right away. But then we didn't take it the next step and say, these are the things that should be done in the future and give them different priorities.
There's a concern, not so much around the prioritization, because I agree we haven't had that conversation yet. But when we have tried to, to take it underneath our own umbrella, the resources are not in place to really facilitate a process. And I'll use a couple of examples. When the security assessment team made their recommendation to the board, the, the next question is, well, what does that cost? And in order to determine what that would cost, we had to go right back to a design build firm to put some numbers to that and come back to the board with some actual recommendations. So even though we prioritize it, it really comes down to competing interests and prioritization of funding that we do or don't have. And we won't be able to gather that information at any detailed level or even at a high level. And that'll be problematic for us to prioritize our list. We have other things that we've worked on and tried to manage it underneath our own umbrella. We're into the second week of school and we still don't have the dust collector in place. And that's problematic. That, that should have been something that we said go to much further in advance than the time that it took to actually put it into place. And we still have yet to open the roof and even inspect what the issues are. And it's because we have such limited ability as well as resource. So, you know, it's something that I think we need to take into consideration when we say we can do these, these tasks and prioritize them and then try to budget and complete them. Our, our short history has shown that it's been very challenging.
We're not engineers. We're not architects. Commercial con, you know, commercial contractors, you know. We're not on any of those things. Yes, we can prioritize, but what you're really, it sounds like to me, you're really pushing back on is having someone manage it and pay for it. And we can't do that. That dust collector was talked about at last November when I started sitting in on meetings. It was supposed to cost $46,000 and it's up to $82,000. And we still needed someone to come in and manage that for us. That installation to get it correct and to be safe and legal.
And I'm not, that's not where I'm at. I think once we get to a point where we can decide what we will support, that we absolutely need help doing it. I'm at, we don't even know if there is support for anything on the board or if we're at a point on this board where we will trust public opinion once we have it. We had 90-some surveys one way last time. Silent majority took over and it didn't pass. But we had 90-some surveys with a 3.8-something and silent majority took over. So I don't want to use taxpayers' money for this process until I know we're at a point where we're going to use it. That's, that's where I'm at. I don't think we're, we've done our work to ask them to do work for us.
Maybe it's a good time to check in with everybody to see if there's other things that haven't been said yet that need to get on the table and then just pause and do some of this homework and can revisit with Kristi and/or Kevin at a later date.
That's, that's what we're expecting. I'm here to answer any questions and be available as a resource. If you want to start the, the process, we'd be happy to help you out as you move forward or can give you any, any of our opinions or expertise. We'd be happy to do so. But just so, just, this is our standard process and it's, it's our proven public input process and it's how we get community buy-in and interaction from the community on how to move forward on projects like this. So just so you know, that's what, that's our game plan.
Thank you. May I have you stay for item number two, just in case there are any questions?
Is it all right if I stay here or should I?
Yeah, that's fine. If you have a question.
Yeah.
Item number two is to approve the resolution, increase revenue limits to purchase the dust collector system. And the language is, is in your board packet of the actual resolution. I've worked closely with Kristi and FHM to, or FHM to, I keep doing that, don't I? Sorry. FEH, it came through in that second one as well. FEH to, to make sure that the resolution is similar to language that we believe and remember their resolution. They mirrored some of that. So any questions from the board? Kristi remains here to, to take those from. Otherwise, I'd make a reservation to approve.
I have a motion to revise this.
Motion, but you have to have a second.
What's that?
Second. What are you approving though?
Yeah.
Clarification on the resolution.
This is the, the resolution, yeah. Why, why is it just a one-year performance contract?
We're going to levy the full amount and pay for the full amount in the same year rather than taking the note over time. I did not investigate taking the 82 and breaking it up over 10 years or five years. I just didn't think it was necessary for that small amount.
And why is it just characterized as an energy efficiency project other than facility improvement?
It's energy efficiency because that's what it needs to be for the Act 32.
I thought Act 32 also included facility improvements.
If there were operational savings.
Yes, if there's operational savings, then it would. So if you were combining schools, that would be an operational savings. But a dust collector?
We might be able to quantify some operational savings. And then we have companies like Dirty Ducks coming in to try to unclog the vents or to create better airflow with the existing vents that we're working. So we might be able to quantify those dollars going forward. But we know we can quantify and capture the energy efficiency much easier. How much would we have saved by not doing the, the maintenance? That, I suppose we could look at a three- or five-year average on maintenance, but it include operational savings. It just splits it into two different markets. Is it all energy efficiency or operational? And it was just easier to capture the, the energy efficiencies.
And you're comparing it to what, the, when you're determining how efficient it is? And measuring that, you have to measure that.
Yep, we're comparing it to its current system, I believe. And the improvement on, on the current system, the new dust collecting system. And those were the two reports that we talked about last time. And those will, will be required to prove the efficiency and savings.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
The whole unit, no, the rest of the newer unit?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, we're just, we haven't quantified that, which we will in the report.
Was a part of that unit come, come up from the other school?
No.
You don't say why.
What's important to realize with this project? Yeah, it might have increased a little bit, Kelly. But the original price tag for this project was $350,000.
You keep saying that, Larry. You just keep throwing that out there.
We were told back in the day that we had to spend $350,000 to be able to.
That's fine, but where you guys have to ball and ask enough questions. So don't, don't be throwing that my face.
Didn't ask enough questions, Kelly?
It was $310,000.
All 310, because the report is here.
It's not apples to apples.
And it included three.
Yeah, it's not apples to apples.
It included three building improvement measures. And it's, two of them were in addition to the dust collector. So the total cost of all three of those measures was the price that was rolled up, not just the dust collector. That was never isolated.
Sorry, but the point remains that if the board was directing us, we would not be in this scenario. We would have said all along, we need a dust collector. We would have known that two years out or three years out, that hey, this dust collector is coming. And so we have to be planning for it. We have to be ready to maintain it. We have to have a plan in place. So I, I mean, we wait for recommendations and then we pick them apart rather than driving the strategy and the, and the plant, facility plan of the buildings.
So at $310,000, if there were a couple of projects rolled into that.
You say that, you know, if you say enough, I guess we're going to, we're supposed to believe that.
Kelly, and we're still able to, to levy over the revenue limit? That's what we're, that's what we're elected to do. A terrible waste of money.
No, but I don't, I don't think that we are elected to wait for a recommendation. No, no, I agree with you. I think you and I are saying the same thing. We are elected to make sure that we have a strategy and a plan in place and we are trusted with the taxpayers' money. And we are trusted to educate kids in, in this community, right? I mean, I think, are we all aligned on that?
Yes.
Yes. I think the difference is, are we a proactive board who is driving the strategy and the, and the recommendations so that Luke and his team know how to march and get us where we want to go? Or are we waiting for recommendations and then we pick them apart because we, we haven't been driving the strategy? Overall, this is what we are trying to do here. This is what we feel 100% confident that our district, the community that we serve, knows exactly where we are headed three and five years from now. It has nothing to do with wasting money. I mean, I'm a, I'm a taxpayer too, Larry. I've got kids here. And when I hear you say, parents of the board are going to come to make these big improvements, boilers aren't big improvements. They're what makes this place operate in the winter. We live in Wisconsin. So I, I pay my taxes too. Of course, I don't want to waste anyone's money, including my own. But part of that is when we don't trust one another, we don't trust, and we don't have this drive to the strategy, we waste time, which is also the taxpayers' resources. Our time, our energy, Luke's time, Luke's energy, people like Kristi and Nexus coming in. If we don't drive it, we waste, waste taxpayers' money just as much as we save it by chopping off 10 grand here or five grand there. Sorry.
So 10 grand adds up pretty quick.
So does meeting after meeting after meeting.
Yes, I know that.
100, if we don't believe that Luke is bringing us good recommendations, that we need to pull them apart, then maybe we save his salary and we, we give rid of our superintendent. I mean, all along. I don't think that that's what should happen. I'll just go on after to say that, but that is what consistently is the issue. We try to do the work after the fact and it's too late.
Do you have any questions on the resolution?
Do you have a, everybody's clear on the resolution?
Luke, do you have a possible potential impact?
Didn't worry.
Yeah. Or a question?
No, I do not. Did not calculate that.
Would be, be de minimis. I mean, it'd be like a penny or something very, very small.
Yeah, it's, it's sense.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, but you spread it across the entire tax base. I'm sorry I didn't, that question had not come up because I think it was so minimal. I don't mean to, to not be prepared for a question like that because it's important. But the other part that I think is equally important is it frees up the operational dollars to put it back in the classroom rather than put it into a dust collector. There's a few ways that, that we can maximize our impact for students. And this is one of the ways, by moving this out from underneath the operational budget, frees those dollars up to, to impact students in the classroom.
Jay, do you have a question?
No, I just said, I have my call to question.
Oh, all right. Question is being called.
So everybody's clear this has gone outside of the enrollment limit. I feel like that's right.
Can I ask one more question though? The one question I have is, we had this inside our budget, so what would happen to the dollars?
We still haven't been given our budget from the state. It has to go through the House and the Senate and then the governor's veto pen. So I can't tell you the impact of the budget because I haven't received one yet. I can only do a best guess estimate of a range of where we are for best case scenario to worst case scenario.
Their budget will be certified by October?
Correct.
Questions being called?
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Dolphin?
No.
Canuck?
Yes.
And Bush?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
And Stetson?
No.
S is 5-2.
If anybody has any questions with as many contact information, so.
Thank you.
There's a question, and hopefully we'll be able to answer it.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate your time.
So that was an item for action on the agenda. We should do something with it.
I moved the table.
Table, motion by Julie to table. Second item. Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
We're table number one.
Right.
Does it need to be more with the table or just indefinite? Okay. So much.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Propose.
That motion carried. Thank you.
I think the Andy got the deal stupidly, we need the first. They're not going to get the price on it. We know we need a proposal.
I have the further information. Any discussion?
I have an enrollment report before the board. It's a, a tale of, of multiple things that I'll try to walk you through. And good news, bad news, sort of, of a situation with regards to enrollment. So as we, the first thing I would draw your attention to is last year's 12 graders were 59, 59 students that were in the third Friday enrollment count have left as a senior. And coming back into the 4K is in this year's report, 36, I believe it's rolled up in here, and additional 3, 3K are early childhood, so 37. That's a difference of 22 kids that just is through a rollover of senior class large going out and a small class coming in. So when we have an uptick of enrollment and new students coming into the district, that's a pretty sizable hole to fill. And so we've done that with the overall number. And this is the 9-7 report. So I'm going to give you some new numbers on the bottom because we have an updated version of this that reflects the, the most current. So this number, 676, I am trying to figure out what. That's what's rolled up in the board packet, right? Because I also have a report that's dated 9-7 of 17 that has different numbers rolled up. So I'm wondering if we're looking at a older report that was updated with the latest and greatest. But what I have, and I'm going to pull this down because I don't think it's reflecting accurately. Sorry, I hadn't thought I had the right report. We were constantly updating these numbers as kids were coming into the district. But what we have at the bottom of the classroom enrollment, can I, let me just take a moment, see if I can get the most.
What's the sparsity cutoff in the?
725. We're well below it. I would have to pull up.
Does it take the last two years or no? Just, is that, is firstly a snapshot? I should know.
It's a snapshot. It would be a break if you.
It might be better to just table this and come back to it later in the meeting so I can pull up both reports in between some of our other discussions because I want to do an accurate comparison of 1617 and 1718 and use those numbers to, to help understand the overall picture of enrollment. As we know it, not locked down to third Friday yet, but this is. As we know it, not locked down to third Friday yet, but this is a report that was current but not updated to the most latest and greatest, so...
That one looks like last year's.
This is 16, 17. That's one I do have that I want to post and compare it to 17. But the one you have in the board book, 17, is not the most recent. And that's what I want to make sure we get what we talked about tonight. So if okay, we'll move forward with some policy discussions, and if you're okay to maybe drive some of that discussion, I can pull up the other few important.
Sure.
Skip budget update, then, too.
We can go into that. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. That's another item here. I just mentioned again, as we know, the Joint Finance Committee has now weighed in on the budget process, which is a very big piece to having a joint finance committee coming together with recommendations that now go before the House this week. They could approve the budget as early as Wednesday. I think they have a meeting scheduled. And then it would follow up with the Senate the following week. It would not be this week. And once the Senate were to act on a budget bill with their recommendations, amendments, or changes, then it would go to the governor, who still has a line item veto. And he has indicated that there are some measures in the state budget, K-12 specifically, that he is not really excited to come by the Joint Finance Committee. So we are still looking at a possible date of September 24th. 24th, 24th is the end of summer. The governor said he would have a budget to us by the end of summer, and that is that date, which gives the week for the House and the week for the Senate, and then the governor's opportunity. At that point, what I can share is going into tonight's meeting, the best case scenario is that we have a small surplus of $125,000. I don't want to minimize the 125, but in a $12 million budget, it's a rather smaller amount, comparatively speaking, down to a deficit of possibly $580,000. I already know that that is a number that can be reduced because that number, when we looked at it, had a whole harmless number pulled out for declining enrollment. And when we get to our enrollment report, you'll find that we still do have a declining enrollment. So that exemption needs to be put back in, and that was roughly $100,000. So that's already going to reduce that $580 down to four-something, depending on how many students were reduced by, on our third Friday count. So the best estimate is we're narrowing this large focus of the state budget down to roughly about $500,000, one way or the other. And as soon as we get those final numbers, then we have to react quickly to make sure that we have as close to a balanced budget as possible. And as you know, the district usually has some accounts that are not spent fully down. We do have some reserves that we hold back for when we have a workers' compensation claim or we have legal fees or some of those that in good years don't get touched. And typically, we've used those funds at the end of the year to try to put into Fund 46 or long-term capital needs. This particular year, we may want to choose to run in the short term with a small shortfall with the anticipation of those unused funds being used to possibly close that budget gap at the end of the year. But we will do the best to put together a balanced budget. Because it is so late again, it's been one of the more challenging topics I've ever had to work through with this district. I am confident we can get there in year two because it is a biennial budget. We'll know those numbers, and we can hit that target, even maybe build in some of that surplus to offset some of the shortfall this year. So over a two-year biennial budget, we again stay budget neutral and meet our targets. So that's the best report I can give at this time. If you need to clarify anything, let me know. But you're watching the same news reports that I'm watching for schools across the state.
Charlie, as we talked about what marches us towards referendum, this line item does more than anything that we talked about from operations.
Operations, for sure, yeah. And this was the scenario seven years ago when we passed the referendum for operations, is that our fixed costs, things we cannot control, continue to exceed the revenues that we get from the state. And that will happen again. And those are just things that continue to slide us out of alignment.
Look at the worksheet as this pops up, wants to be, but we won't be declining enrollment.
Yes, the revenue limit again, this is the calculation sheet. The only reason I loaded it up is to let you know that we're working on this diligently. These numbers again were where Marcia and I were midweek last week. And this enrollment report hasn't been reflected with revenue limit calc sheet. And so there's some numbers that we know aren't jiving yet. That's why we're not able to pin it down just yet. Ultimately, what locks that down is the third Friday. This Friday being the second one. So in a week and four days, we will just know what those numbers are. We will plug them in, and we know what we get for revenue. Actually, we don't know yet. It's anticipated we get $200 this year per student, incategorically, again, not through a shared funding formula. So the best we can guess, but to the point is that we're working on this together jointly. These numbers are constantly being updated and scrubbed. Marcia and I are meeting weekly to go over the latest that she understands from DPI and the knowledge that I'm bringing back from business and managers across the state. And we're reconciling those. It's complex.
Right now, we're on line six.
Mm-hmm.
680, eight for 15, 680 for 16, 715.
Six, red line two, six down here.
There you go.
Yeah.
And so how do we go from 715 to 694 in two years?
The 715 to 694, that's part of the enrollment.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a three-year average.
Yeah. It is based on a three-year average, so this line is actually coming from 15, 16, and 17. And as you can see, they add up, this is the summer school numbers formula. This one up here is the, we have the, here we are, the 701, the 699, the 672. Add it up and divided by three gives you that September FTE average. Then add in summer school of 23, 22, and 21 with what's coming in 17. So actually, 14 is going to drop off. It'll be 15, 16, and 17 once we get third Friday. So what you're seeing is a three-year average of what we know to date.
All right.
So this number is not... I will give you a more accurate number in just a second.
Is would this Friday be third Friday in September?
We're in the second week of school, but September 1st was a Friday.
I don't know. That might just change things for Angie here a little bit, getting that old reports out of stuff, but...
That's a great question.
Does summer school start at the first?
Yeah. So the actual third Friday could be as soon as this Friday.
The 15.
I have not considered that. So that's good to know. It doesn't change what happens other than we try to take very accurate attendance because they do a look back. The student has to be in attendance at school the day before or the day after the third Friday count, to the three-day look through, look period. And if they haven't been in school for either one of those three days, then you cannot count on your September 3rd Friday. So we make sure the teachers are taking accurate attendance at the end of that week, which again, if the students are here, it doesn't change anything. It's just making sure that they're accounted for in our enrollment system.
Overall, we're going to be down some.
Overall, we will be down at this time.
At this time.
Yeah. And I'll explain why just as soon as I pull up the most recent 7 to 8.
You want to move on, obviously.
That'd be great. I'm taking one seventy-one and just kind of walking it through. So for those that are following, I'll just bring you to page 1, page 32 in your board packet, if you have that, or the policy on regular board meetings, 171 in the electronic board.
It should probably be called regular and special board meetings. This was an option in the Policy Resource Guide that combined these two things. So the description of the regular meeting is as we generally have it, the second Monday at 6:30. And then it explains special board meetings can be called under two circumstances. One is the board president, and the other is the majority of the board can call a special meeting. And then just some language over presiding over the meetings in reference to the sun laws. Pretty basics.
Can I get motion to approve?
This is actually just firstly.
Never mind.
So we'll see you next week, next month. Can we move on to 171.1?
Sure.
That is the public notification. And again, this is taken from the Policy Resource Guide. I think something we can discuss is how specific we want to be as to where the notice is. This is written, right, this is taken right from the resource guide. So we didn't say, like, the Democrat should be, but we could. I personally think that would be good. Looked at as something we could discuss, so I'm in favor of that. And then also, it says where the, it doesn't really say where the notices, like, if we put these in the office. I would like to see them in the window facing out in the offices, personally. So what do you all think of those two ideas?
Aye, all.
Chell, can you confirm for me where they are posted at this time?
Angie does, so I was there. I don't know.
I don't know that I've ever seen them in the windows facing out so that people can see the school board agenda without having to actually go into the office at both elementary and here. And then the rest of this is more or less a reflection of just what the law is, the requirement for posting meetings. And it's, again, taken from the laws we...
I would like to see a display case in between...
There is one, I think.
The two central doors.
The notice board.
The notice board.
There's one right across from the hallway that Janet uses frequently for jobs.
In the main hallway?
Right out, right out from here, right by the FFA. There's the FFA has, it's right down hall, right here on the left. Right, if you walk right out from the hallway, or the office, it's right there.
People that are coming into the gym, the main entrance.
Between the door doors?
Between the doors.
Yeah. Are there, that's why the art case right now?
No.
Between the doors or the...
Oh.
Statement.
Additional statement.
Yeah. Or somewhere in that main hallway, the main entrance of the building, in both buildings. Parents walk in, at least we did our best to advertise the agenda for public use.
I'd still like the, having it be in a place where you could stand and actually read it. If you're in the vestibule, you can't really stand there. There's too much in and out. And also, if it's behind glass, people can't mess with it.
Yeah. Well, the locker will display the case.
Yeah, but I mean, couldn't it just be in the window?
It could, but how many parents come down the main hall?
But there's windows spacing out and across from that trophy case.
Right.
So this is the high school.
Before you turn the corners.
Yeah. There's windows spacing in the gym.
Sometimes there's ads there for like prom photos or...
So Larry, if your point is to reach parents, every parent gets a mail copy of the agenda, so they should get that.
Well, and that's also, I don't think spelled out in this. And I don't, I think it would be good to spell that out in here.
Is that, I mean, is that a legal way to inform people? No.
No, but I think the, I think personally, as, I mean, as board, we can make additional rules on top of what the legal requirements are. Since we are doing that, and I think it's a good thing, and I personally would like to see it continue. I don't think it's a bad thing to spell it out, the email, and also that it's posted on social media.
Put your hands to it.
Right. So are you all in favor of making those changes? And so next month, it would reflect what we actually do with more specificity? It's wild. Okay. All right. All right, then 173.
171.1 was public notification.
171, 173. So sessions, which you did step in.
171.
So remember, we had taken out...
Looks like you took out closed sessions from open sessions?
Yeah, we merged it into one file. So this, okay, 171.2. In the WASB, they give you several different options for how the agenda is prepared. One was superintendent prepares the agenda. The other was the school board prepares the agenda. And this was the middle of the roadmap where the board president and the superintendent worked collaboratively, collaboratively, which I like that theoretically. I think, I'm not sure that's how it's been going. I think Luke more or less prepares the agenda. But I like that the board president has the authority to collaborate to prepare the agenda. And I think it's important for the board then, to when they're selecting whose president, say, think, well, that person has a say in the agenda, and that's an important thing. So that's why I was in favor of this one.
Larry, do you work collaboratively?
On a every-month basis, but every other month, I would say we do, for various reasons.
Okay. So again, it's just a first rule. And then the last...
173 is closed sessions. I think what we combined is in the general policy of regular and special.
Right. Closed sessions, the options they gave you for closed session, one was sort of broad and vague. This one is very specific about the different criteria that you can use for going into closed session. And it pretty much sets forth what the law is.
Yes, because that's been questioned. In Milwaukee, that was a huge deal recently, correct?
Yeah.
Well, we've had issues with it too. And in the past, we were using this great big thick...
Attorney General Guide.
Attorney General guidelines on when you go into closed session. So this instead is a page and a half telling you when. So I think this could be a helpful tool for the board.
It says board employee?
Yes.
Can we mean that's a district? Yeah, okay.
It should say district, yes. I have the link for my...
And then I just wondered if, so should we, and once this policy is approved or not approved, I mean, is this question is more for after it's established? But should we be stating when we move into closed session, one of these reasons?
Yes, and I think we've been trying to do that as of late.
Yeah, so I agree. But I think even, like, last month was a good example when Mike Wagoner's like, "I don't even know what's going on." Like, we should, I mean, if we're trying to build trust with clarity, we should make sure that we...
Very explicit.
Right. We are going into closed session, and we can say that, even if we have to pull this up, say, it gets, you know, relative...
We could just have this on the...
Yeah, something. So we can say, and I think it will hold us accountable to when we might be having an uncomfortable discussion that actually shouldn't be in closed session, and we just have to be having that conversation. I think that will help us build trust.
So this reflects the legal aspect. I mean, you just kind of wrote it down, basically, correct?
I didn't. This is a, this is a...
WASB guide.
A WASB guide, okay. That should be up today.
Yeah. And it's got, and if you scroll down, if you're looking on the computer, you see the Wisconsin statutes. You should be able, those should be links, and you should be able to...
Yep, 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 yep.
And then you'll see it's verbatim.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's fine. I just know that it was a huge deal this summer. I don't know if it was Milwaukee or Friday was, but it made the news.
All right. So do you want to talk about the purchasing?
Yeah.
I think there was some...
My mistake, too. We had updated all of the policies from our policy committee. It was in the 100 series. We had touched on policy 672. We didn't make any changes from the last regular board meeting, but I moved this document forward from the meeting, and it does reflect the changes we discussed. So in the third paragraph, we are leaving the purchases of goods and services at 5,000. It's currently lined out with a red 10,000. I know it's in black and white, but that didn't change at all.
Are we looking at purchasing 672?
Yeah, page 39 in the board packet, for those that are there.
Yep, yep, yep.
So third paragraph reflects 5,000, cross off 10,000. And then the fourth, the sixth paragraph is correct, and then we crossed off 10,000 and put 5,000. So that would be the motion.
And we wanted to change to the board declares its intention to purchase qualified locally. Quali, I think we have to say qualified in there.
And which paragraph?
The first paragraph.
Board declares its intention to purchase locally competitively and to seek maximum...
Somehow it has to be qualified.
Well, I think the second sentence sort of gets it, that it has to comply with applicable laws and DPI regulations.
I still, I, okay. I have a reason for this. I'll wait to say later.
Okay. And this is, we moved into action items, but... And this is, we moved into action items, but if I understand, your suggestion is the board declares its intention to purchase locally from qualified vendors?
Yes.
Okay, that's something we can discuss as a board, if we choose to.
Okay.
Competitively and to seek Those will all move forward to the next meeting for a second reading, and those become action items next month, but this will be the time to weigh in on any of the discussion items in the 100 series through 173, I believe it was, the purchasing policy listed as action.
Okay.
And Lisa, where did you think that that kind of infers in the second paragraph?
The second sentence.
This one stays in action.
In the first paragraph.
Yeah.
The purchasing procedures.
Oh, I see, yeah. Well, yes.
Does that address your issue?
No, but I'll just, yeah. No, no, but I'll wait.
This is for action, so I mean, wait until we move
Do you want to table this?
Get ready for discussion?
Yeah, I want to table this, because I have a question.
Okay.
And, so, a couple things. This would be a great time to potentially handle that question, because it is up for action, it's the final consideration, but it can also always be tabled. Do we want to go back and finish up discussion? Do we want to finish action that we kind of rolled into in purchasing, which the board is over there?
The purchasing policy? What is your question, Kelly?
I'll just wait, I just want to table it, I want to think this through, okay?
You're not ready to vote tonight, wait a second.
Yep.
So is that a motion, are we going to table it?
Yes. Motion to table it, please.
Okay. Second by Julie. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
I mean, do you want to come back to a policy meeting, Kelly? Or we can do this, table it until the next board meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Just want to confirm, is there anybody opposed to?
I am. I, I vote no.
So we got 612.
I'd love to hear your question, Kelly.
Let me think, let me think through this, so I, I want to find my questions, so
Second reading of board policy, 100 series.
Four. Yeah, and we can keep going down, I mean, it's for action, we can go back to the discussion on it, whichever you prefer is the word.
Let's finish the, finish the policy.
So, 165 is conflict of interest. 166 is a conflict of interest. I don't believe we changed
We look at page
I think we did change the conflict of interest to make it less, remember Amy had this suggestion?
It did specifically address immediate family. I think we took that language
Right. We took it out. So those are, for approval, I think 170, however, I think we should table that, or just get rid of it, because I think it's covered by 171.
We just said
Which we, which will come back here.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I have a problem with the conflict of interest, though. And number three, the vote debating and voting, is that actually spelled out that way in the law? Because I thought that there was another section in 121. I went to look it up before I came, and I just didn't have time.
Is this in the rule, or the?
In 165.1.
In what, what?
Number three.
Okay.
It's under number three.
Okay.
Because when I talked to the attorney generals, and that said, at the state level, he said that, and I agree with Lisa, and that the board can make this decision, but, he said you cannot take the rights away, like hypothetically, if I had a conflict of interest, I could sit in the audience, and I should be allowed to be able to speak, because I'm a taxpayer. So I have a problem with debating. I have no problem with a, with a board member not voting if they have a true conflict.
But I think it means debating as a board member. If, if it said, refrain from both debating as a board member and voting, would that address your issue? So that then you can debate it from the audience?
I don't, I don't think, it was my understanding, when I talked to the attorney general, that a board member has the right to say and debate an issue. So, yeah, I have a problem with believing that debating in there, I'm opposed to that. I'm just one vote.
Again, I didn't draft this, I just took it right from the thing.
Yeah. So clarify, your conversation with the board about this, that you should be able to table if you have a conflict of interest, but not
But still can abstain.
Why don't we table this? Let's table it, so that we can all
Okay, we can find out?
Why don't we all look up the law? It's, it's attached to the, at the bottom, where it says Wisconsin statutes. Everybody look it up and, and see. I mean, I think we want to go with what's written in the statute.
I think there's, from my understanding, both are correct, in that there is, there's a right to be able to debate, but the board can limit that if the board so chooses, and therefore, there's, there's really an option, or a myriad of options. For instance, if we go to page 42, which is the rule, it goes along with the policy, specifically number three, it says the board strongly encourages any member who is not participating in a matter due to potential conflict of interest, with possible bias, to temporarily leave the meeting for the time during which the board is addressing the matter in question. So it even takes it a step further, again, that not debating, but actually
Yeah, I have a problem with that paragraph, too.
And so therein lies, in a, in a small local community with a lot of affiliations, you know, do we want, or how far do we want to limit the ability to be involved in these decisions? And that's really where it's like, lies within the board to determine that. But, I'll go back to what I heard was a possible
Or, I mean, the other option is we can take a vote on it.
We have a, my question is, you know, would we be better just to have the discussion now, or to continue to have the discussion later? We've kind of talked about it, we've sent it to committee, we've brought it back. At some point, we just need to put it to rest and say it's this way or that way, or we continue to deliberate and get more information that might be helpful in somebody's determination.
Which statute, where do you look up?
I don't remember the number.
Do you want that, you want another month to look up this statute?
If you, if the majority is, you have no problem with it, you know, I'm just one vote. I just, I just don't think that we should be trying to curtail anybody from Steve Heath, whether as a board member or a public person, that's a taxpayer in the district. I mean, I, I look at it as if it was something that I was somewhat of an expertise, had some expertise in, I would think you would want my opinion, or if you had an expertise like you do with legality, I prefer to hear from you all the time on that. But if there was a true conflict of interest, that would mean that you couldn't say anything. I just have a problem with that.
I think, I, I mean, I think these rules are in there for the protection of the board members, to help instruct them, especially new board members, who, I mean, we all had conflicts, all of us. And so to have rules that are
But I would still like your opinion, even if you had a conflict, or Julie had a conflict, I would still want your opinion.
I wouldn't
But I think, I don't think you should vote, but I think
I, I would be uncomfortable giving a vote. If I had a conflict, I would be uncomfortable giving it, because I wouldn't want to get in trouble. I would lay my ear on the side of it, just
Well, and I think that's why the, declaring what your, your conflict is or your association, so I think then the board can weigh in to say, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, my husband is employed at school, my opinion should matter in his compensation conversation. But if it was, you know, something that, yes, I'm loosely related to this, you know, area of expertise
That came to it.
Which, the rule breaks down, it says the board gets to decide that, and the board, after the board member has declared their association, the board can decide whether or not they believe that the level of conflict warrants removal of the discussion and the vote, or whether they consent, and so
I, I think actually, the decision lies with each individual board member, and that's what it says. So if you, it says each individual board member is ultimately responsible for personally identifying and taking appropriate action. I don't think the board has authority to tell a board member, you have a conflict, you can't participate, or something. I think it's up to the board member, and
We can go to the
There are certain, certain actions
Stomachly encouraging them.
There's, yes, and then there are certain actions that the board can take
You can create a motion, it goes in the minutes.
Right.
Participation goes in the minutes.
And we all operate under state statutes to protect that, of course.
I think where the, the conflict, or the rub comes in, is when someone doesn't heed their own warnings and unduly influences a debate or an outcome of a vote, because they didn't self-regulate themselves to not involve themselves in a, in a potential conflict. So that's, I think, where the, the real issue lies for the board.
And I think that number two in the rule talks about what nonparticipation means. It's like four different things, whether they debate and discuss, make a recommendation. So, I mean, some of what we just have talked about is sort of covered in the, it's, any of these things could be, you could decide, I'm in conflict, and here's how I'm going to not participate, minimum. Right? It gives different scenarios, so I personally feel like
Ask DJ, you want to, what do you want, do you want?
No, I don't
You did your way of the buck, I just
Then when I weigh motion, get through about 165.1.
Okay.
Question by Julie, do you want to sign it?
I will.
Second by Kelly, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Can I have a question about the discussion? So like today, the bill's payable, I just want to know. So I abstained, but I didn't state why I was abstaining. And should I be declaring that my, you know, the business that my husband and I are owners of was on that? So I should be saying that when I abstain?
I think so.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Because I, I mean, I figured that out.
Yeah, well, I assume people know, but I also, I shouldn't be saying it for the community to know why I would be abstaining, too, and I
And not everybody in the community might be that. I mean, there's new people in the community, and
Yeah. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One nod.
Yep.
Passes 61.
Board member, electronic communications, I don't think we made any changes to this.
Are there any questions, please, we need a motion for approval?
Yeah, I don't think we did anything to that, sorry.
No, but we should point out, if we're going to approve this, it does say that Luke has to send to only school district emails.
Correct.
So if there's issue with that, then it must be addressed before we approve it.
And where, where does that say specifically, anyone, just had that?
Oh.
I know I was in charge of reading.
Yes, I think it's on the rule, too.
Okay. I know I had to retain
Well, no, I think that it, right, I was just going to say, it doesn't say he only could, or that that's where we would have the archive. If people, no, that was related to the Little Warren, is her district email account?
Second paragraph, last line, official email communications from any district employee to any board member will be sent to the board member's district issued
Okay.
So again, 166 rule, paragraph two, sentence two.
I, I hope that we approve 166 and its rule. I'll second that.
Do you have a motion and a second? Further discussion?
So, no board member will be able to access any school, school issued emails on their own personal email accounts?
And I think that would be possible, in, in short, what this says is I would be sending it to a school's email account, but we would have to set up your device or your computer to be able to pull it, both your personal account and your email account into one inbox, so that you would see both, but it would be coming in as a school.
It's easy to navigate between
And I would be happy to
Or you could set up a forward.
Yeah, it would be an automatic forward message.
Right? So, so, yeah. Where if you, if you were just like, get into your school email, or unwilling, I mean, honestly, some people just don't want to have two different, you could automatically forward it to a different address, but the record would be in that school-related email. The ownership, though, would be on the board member, then, if they, like, so if you've got a forwarded message to Stevenson at Gmail, or whatever, and I was responding to a community member or another member of the board, and if Luke wasn't on it, or it wasn't through my school email, the ownership would be on me to forward it to Luke or to my school email, so the record is there of the conversation.
It's easy, because you have Gmail, your other, your Gmail, to navigate from one Gmail account to the other is, is pretty easy.
Right. Now, I have Gmail, so you'll have to, you would have to
Do the forward?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I'm, I'm pretty confident, I think I can sit down with the board members that use personal accounts, and get things to come in a pretty seamless way, and now we can always revisit the policy. And again, if you're sending back a message to me from your personal email to me at the school account, which is what we all do, that's archived, because it's to my account. It would only be, again, if you're doing official board business between two people that are not school district employees, that you have to either send me a copy so I can archive it
Sometimes people email
Or, or you can just save it yourself, if you don't delete your emails. You don't have to go through all that. If you don't delete your emails for the next seven years or something.
I mean, like, if somebody sends a letter and you forward it to us, then I don't have to do anything.
Right, it's fine, if it starts with Luke
I would never respond, I would, I would call you.
And again, if somebody sends you a letter directly, and you don't respond, you do not have to archive that. However, if you respond back, and of course, if it's a response occasion, maybe you have to archive it.
I say that publicly, I don't respond back.
So do I.
What happened, though? All in personal
Yeah.
So true.
I don't
Just change.
Is there a lot showing?
Maybe a motion and a second.
Maybe a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
170? The recommendation is to drop
Well, 170, we're dropping it.
So no action taken. And then we move back to discussion one. I'm glad to report that I'm not losing my mind, you have the right document in your packet. And I'll explain where the confusion comes in. This is a, because it's a public document, it's re-vacted to be simplified, and so, in its most simple form, the residents enrolled is 676, which is at the bottom of your, your packet. That's our FTE for the current school year, not a third Friday, this could change and probably will change, but as of the snapshot when kids came into school last Tuesday. The residents that are enrolled here, that are open and rolling out, is 42. That is also a correct number, is what we had as of September 7. The number of residents that are enrolling in is 90. That would be open enroll in, again, they're not our residents, they're resident in another school district coming into our district. So, 676 would be our FTE, 42 is our residents that are open and rolling out, and 90 are non-residents open and rolling in.
That's why I have 42 kids.
That are open and rolling out of the district, correct.
And that 42 is not in that 676, right?
That 42 is not in that 676. And I'll show you where these numbers tie. So
I'm surprised
I'm going to try to make it as big as I can without, so here's a side by side, let's focus just on the left for a little bit. These are the numbers that I was sharing with you, if you noticed, the 676 is still here.
Yeah.
The 42 is still here, and the 77 plus 13 makes 90. So, it ties, but when I'm looking at, the first thing I was panicking was when I saw 724, you looked at 676, it's how does that reconcile? So let me explain a little bit of what's happening in this particular report. So the, the 724 is the actual, if you want to think of it as butts in seats, number of kids that are coming into our district from anywhere, everywhere, and how many kids are sitting down at the end of the day. If you looked over to the right, in 2016, the number is 714. So the net number of butts in seats from last year to this year is up 10. We have 10 more student bodies in the building than we had in front of us here. So here's where it gets a little bit confusing, but I'll try to walk you through it. The, let's just take a senior class of 48 kids. We have 10 more student bodies in the building than we had the previous year. So here's where it gets a little bit confusing, but I'll try to walk you through it. The, let's just take a senior class of 48 kids. Six of those kids are, um, not ours. They're open and rolling in. So out of that group of 48 butts in the seats, six of those kids, we have to take off because they're, they're not our kids. They're somebody else's kids. We're at 42. Four of those kids are our kids, but they're going to another school district. So even though we don't see them anywhere, we still count them. So you add another four on and you're at 46. 42 and four make 46. So these two columns, you'll see a pair of the minuses, and these are the pluses, which makes it seem backwards because these are our kids over here and these are our kids that are, are not. So what, then if you look at the, the big numbers at the bottom, so 724 subtracted out, out of those 724 butts in the seats, take away 90 students that are not ours, it gets you down to seven, or sorry, 634. And then you add back the 42 students that are ours but are going somewhere else, puts you at 676, which is the number of FTE that we would have for our school district.
You sure that's not flipped?
Positive. Yeah.
Are we concerned about 42 hourly districts?
We are not. Uh, we've surveyed families just as recently as last year to learn why those students are, are peeling out. And, uh, in almost all cases, it's more out of convenience of where people work. Uh, I live in Landzen. It's easier to drop my kid off at kindergarten there and pick them up on the way home. Not so much, uh, and I can share those survey results, but not as much impacted by the academic offerings or the dissatisfaction.
And I know that scenario, that we did the pre-K with Carter because it was easier, but then he's full-time now.
Yeah. Now, to take it one step further, the 676, I'm sorry, I don't know if I get this to go away here, but it drops down to 662 because our early childhood counts as, uh, five tenths of a student. Pre-K counts as six tenths of a student. So we prorate those as half kids and half bodies and six tenths of a body. The actual final FTE when we convert over is 662. We looked at the same scenario last year, 714 kids, 67 of them are not ours and 48 of them are ours that left, gives us 700, convert to FTE, 682. So we're actually declining in FTE residents by 20 students. 20 students, uh, times the, um, the formula for a student enrollment point is a significant decrease in revenue. You think roughly $10,000 per student times, um, go ahead, 20 students.
Don't we get money for the open and roll in using it?
We do. So that part's not factored in and you're right, uh, it's not the full amount. It's $6,700, I believe, is the tuition of enrollment amount. And again, we pay that out in this case for 42 students times 6,700, and we get 90 students times 6,700 back from districts. So that does increase to our favor, but it's not the full amount to educate those kids in the classroom. So what, what accounts to that? I think the, the first thing that I alluded at is last year, this number 48, uh, senior class was 59. And so when we have 59 seniors leave and we only have 38 or 39 pre-kers come in, that's a difference of 21, 22 students. So when you take a look at all those kids that are filling our seats, that's part of that net is filling up the 22 that we lost just from rolling over classes. So you take that off the top, uh, of those extra open enrollments and that's a big piece of it. Comparably, 90 students open and rolling in this year. Last year was 67. So our open enroll in continues to increase. That's favorable. Last year, 48 students open and rolled out, and this year only 42 open and rolled out. So the trend continues in a good direction and we have more kids in this building this year than we had last year, but our enrollment is declining. It's crazy.
What's a tuition waiver non-resident?
Tuition waiver non-resident is somebody that is, um, in our district. And so some of these kids are only taking a partial class, like two tenths. They're here two hours in a day. They're partially enrolled. So this actual FTE didn't take into account.
Those are homeschoolers?
Homeschoolers that might be taking partial courses or paying tuition would be part of our school district above beyond the first two classes.
Have you figured our new open and roll in numbers minus the FTE numbers, where do we stand if you, if you were to use last year's?
The financial impact of all of that? Don't have that, but we can do some quick math because we know we're down 20 FTE or 20 students at $10,000 per student.
200.
200,000. So now you can start rolling that back into that budget discussion we were having. And we were talking about the, the swing that we're at. Uh, when you take 200 off the top, that's a very big jump.
How many, how many more open and roll in students do we have? Is 30 more, right?
We have 33 more in this year.
33 more in, and it was 6,700?
Mm-hmm.
221. Really, it's not 33, isn't it?
Uh, from 67 last year to 90 this year.
23.
20 to 67.
Plus, okay.
No, 20, yeah, you're right, 23, thanks. And again, uh, we can't use the full 90 because these 13 are partially enrolled. They're just.
Right.
So I don't know how many of them are, two tenths versus six tenths, so, but rough, I mean, we're just, this is the, the challenge in all of this, is to try to pin this thing down.
Which ones counts towards sparsity eight, then?
Uh, so the, the final number.
42?
Yep. The final number is the 662 counts towards sparsity eight. So we are well below sparsity eight. We're, we're going to be fine for a while. And one of the provisions is even if we did jump above 725, they're talking about giving you half of the money in the first year and then taking away the rest. I like that gradual release because there's going to be a day where maybe our enrollment will increase again. Uh, the other part that I mentioned in the budget, which will add much more sense, is I thought when we have 10 more butts in our seats, our enrollment is, is up. And so we took out the declining enrollment, old harmless provision out of our revenue limit calculation sheet. You'll see it's zeroed out in that, in the board. It's because we anticipated our enrollment actually went up because we got 10 more kids net. Well, now when we look at the FTE, we got to put that back in. So that was $100,000 that we took out of revenue from the state for declining enrollment that we now are getting and we need to put back in. So we'll continue to hammer this down day by day, week by week. And then there's the, the conundrum at the state level that we just don't know yet. So, um, my hope is that we're getting very close to giving you some final numbers, but I want you to be aware and, and updated to the extent that we know and keep working through it.
Thank you.
Why is there such a change in year to year, every other year before the pre-K, 38 to 56?
If we look at, um, so here we go. If you follow this, your 11th graders last year are now 12th graders this year. So 46 to 48, up two. Okay, you got that? And then if I go down to 10th to 11th, 51 to 57, so we're up six. 43 to 46, still up three. 47 to 51, up four. 60 to 62 are up two. 49 stayed flat. 51 to 53, up two. 59 to 58 dropped one. 55 to 57, up two. 41, up three. 51 to 53, up two. 42 to 44, up two. 50 to 56 kindergartners.
So we picked up six last year.
Yeah, between last year and this year. But again, where we dropped was 56 seniors going out, 38 four-year-olds going in, gobbled it all up. So almost every class, I don't think any of them were, they were either flat or going up all the way through the, the years. But because we had that big class out, a small class in, so the, I think the last piece for the board to just monitor is what happens in the next or the next pre-K classes. We have two or three consecutive years of very small pre-K. That would start to say we might have a trend that we need to look at long-term. Would I knee-jerk react right now with one small class? No, just like I would knee-jerk with one large class, but it may be a pattern that we have to start watching.
Is there a larger demographic that we could look at?
Did you say a larger demographic?
What's, what's the trend for, like, the Southwood's not so much, grade or?
I, I went to a, I think at the school board convention a couple of years ago, and it talked about, um, rural enrollment is declining in these states. Um, and urban is declining and the suburban is what's going on. And it projected it going forward, like 10 years.
Was that a four-year-old account from today, starting today?
No, that was from September 7th.
Okay. So we have added some.
There, there have been a few enrollments coming in, yeah. I don't know on what grade level. It was in training today with a pass program, so.
I just don't know, 34 pre-Ks starting today, if that number make a lot?
From an advocacy perspective, Kelly, you touched on something the Rural Schools Alliance has been talking about is that if we don't fix rural schools and their funding plates, families and students will continue to leave to the suburbs where they have more assets and more resources and more accommodations and more staffing supports. So if we get rural school right, there's people that they believe will exit suburban because they don't want suburban. They'd rather have rural settings that have smaller personalized class sizes, but because they have so limited resources, we're moving out of kids to other schools. So it's an interesting dilemma and debate. The Rural Schools Conference has some really powerful speakers coming up at the end of October. I think it's the 30, 31st. I'm presenting there. Encourage any board members to go. It's always a good time to hear about rural school research and, and policy on some of these things that are happening statewide.
The majority of districts in Wisconsin are rural. So they should, you know, be called.
Two-thirds, I think it is, of the districts across the state have 1,000 kids or less. And that's made up of, uh, or, um, I think they have less than half of the legislatures representing that two-thirds. So the majority that represents suburban, urban areas will always take over the majority of schools that are under, you know, a subset of, of legislation. That is my report. Uh, thanks for allowing me to back up to the phones.
Nothing in closed session?
Nothing in closed session today.
Next meeting date is listed on our agenda. A motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Motion by Kelly. Do a second.
Sorry, go on.
Second by Larry. All in favor, say aye.